Energy stand please to the flag. Ready to begin?
I have a resignation to your side of the United States of America. And to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice law.
We have a report out of closed session. In closed session by a vote of five to zero, board of action to accept the resignation, classified employee number seven six zero 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 seven seven eight, in lieu of termination. A motion to adopt our agenda please, on move. Carol, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
A few edits. First, on my 2018 meeting dates, which should be July 17th and not July 18th. Uh, live. On consent, item 12 KII on page 22, which is minutes, a vote such five zero should have been four zero one. Member of the morning is absent. And then on item 12D, which is the dance trip, the hotel has changed. To next hotels.
Those changes in the agenda are accepted from the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jim is adopted. Um, we have special recognition tonight on the reflection winners and that's Jennifer Baker is, oh, there you go. Turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us here. It's an honor to be here to recognize the students in our district for their amazing creativity. So we have some slides for you today. The PTA contest is a yearly contest. It's a national contest where students are referred to explore the arts. And this year's theme was Within Reach. We had about 200 district participants and we have five of the lucky winners here to honor tonight. We have six different categories that the students can enter and five different divisions based on their grade level. And the students have to do their work on their own. No parent help is permitted. I especially appreciate seeing what the kids do when they come up with their thoughts and ideas. This contest is judged in a very unique way. Fifty percent of the points in this contest comes from what the students write about their work. So when they talk about what their inspiration was for addressing the theme, their creativity and what they intend to create, this fifty percent of what they do. And then the product, their creativity and their mastery of that subject is the other fifty percent. So we have all of the division winning entries are going to be listed. Six of our kids are here. I'm proud to present Rosie Simpson. Rosie, will you come up to the podium? Grace, gonna shake your hand, congratulations. And Rosie had a wonderful dance that she did for us called Find Your Book. Congratulations. Rosie actually had a double header, so we're gonna see her in just a second. Our division winner from El Moro in literature was Kalina Chanel. Our division winner in literature. Oh, Kalina! Come right over here, speak.
That's Taylor.
Oh, you're Taylor? Is Kalina here? Okay, where is Kalina?
Taylor.
Oh. Is this Kalina or Taylor?
Taylor.
Taylor. She's Taylor.
Oh, is Kalina here?
I'm sorry.
No. Okay. Sorry. Hang on just a minute, sweetie, I will get right to you. All right. Don't be, but don't be shy when I call your name. From division winner at Top of the World, yeah, Warren Lee. Division winner in literature, Ruby Sampson. Division winner from Thurston in literature, Lauren Trauttenberg. And division winner in the Brooklyn Beach High School, Little Boy, Julian Williams Holfer. Our musical composition, Rosie Simpson, there you are again, Rosie. I'm super proud of Rosie for entering the contest more than once. Thank you very much. And her dance was really, really cool. It was the only dance that we've gotten. Really was proud to be part of both of those entries. Music composition for Top of the World, Ally Alexandra Knight, Ally Monow. Congratulations. And music composition from Thurston, No One Knows It is here. And our music composition winner at Lagoon Beach High School was Gravy Moss. Our division winner photography at Top of the World in primary, Grayson Bresel. Yep. And our division winner photography from intermediate was Mia Yanez. It's great for you to get to scroll through and just see the highlights even though the kids couldn't be here. Our photography winner Thurston, Magdalena Yen. Over the Lagoon Beach High School, Lauren Tran. Competing with MUN tonight. At El Moro Elementary, our division winner, Taylor Jones. Our division winner of visual arts, Katam Sadi. And our division winner at El Moro Elementary, Emily Williams. Our visual arts winner, Top of the World, Emma Bird. Congratulations then. Our Thurston Middle School division winner in visual arts, Lila Day Holston. Our Lagoon Beach High School visual arts winner, Amy Yu. Our Top of the World film baker, Serena O'Neal. Did a very cute video about the day in the life of her dog. Our division winner from Thurston, Ally Schneider, Jordan Schneider. By the way, if anybody comes in, let, let me know. And who have I missed? Have I missed anybody? No, so let's have a big round of applause. For this one, I'd like to ask Taylor to come join Ally and all of our division winners, can you stand up? We're gonna take a quick picture and wherever you would like us to smile.
Uh, if we could not just.
Do you want to come up here or?
Um, no, we can group up here.
Okay, shall we group right over here? I know you can step up here by Dr. Florida. Let's have some people right in right here.
All right, one, two, and. Thank you guys.
Just to say while the kids are here representing the kids that could not be here for reflections, that the next stage in the contest is that the kids will go to fourth district for competition. And there their works will be in competition with all the students in Orange County that are at your age level that participated. There was a wonderful reception near Valentine's Day in February where you'll be invited to come and see who the winners of that contest were. And that goes all the way through state and then national. And Lagoon Beach has had many kids go on to those levels, so we look forward to seeing your works do really well in the contest. Thank you for participating.
That's our show.
Thanks Jennifer for all your hard work.
There are cookies out there for.
Please take some cookies.
Thank you Jennifer. You're welcome.
We really appreciate you.
My pleasure. Oh, before I make a big mistake, could I recognize my team? Anne, you're here, Julia, could you come up? Is Nicole here? Is Amelia here? Anne and Julia, come close enough so we can give you a round of applause. These ladies are, you know, my right hand, left hand. It takes a village, it really does. And I am so, so thankful to have you guys here. Thank you so much. Thanks for keeping on. Okay.
My first is throwing a hat question.
Now we have public comment on any non-again item. Is there anyone who's got an interesting comment? And we'll move to our reports and, hi, for you, our third report, students.
Over the past few weeks, students have been working hard through the end of first semester and are looking forward to winter break. Seniors have matriculation tests this week and are waiting to hear back from colleges. Both LBHS and Thurston's performing arts departments have been busy with winter concerts. The LBHS winter dance concert, Balance, ran last Thursday through Saturday. Yesterday, LBHS and Thurston have a winter instrumental concert. Tomorrow, Thurston will be having their winter choral concert and LBHS will be having theirs this Thursday at seven. Auditions for LBHS drama department's spring musical, All Shook Up, were held this past Sunday and Monday. The LBHS November food drive collected a total of 1,663 items for people in need. Mrs. Merritt's fourth period class collected the most of 329 items and they will be receiving a class B support. For the month of December, LBHS ASB is focusing on the theme of friendship by exploring the differences between friendships and fashions. We highlighted the qualities of dependability and loyalty as characteristics of a good friend. ASB is also honored to host LBHS faculty's holiday breakfast this Friday. LBHS chorus and jazz band will be performing. We will have a holiday spirit week next week, which will include pajama day, ski gear day, and ugly sweater day. On behalf of athletic director Lance Neal, Breaker Athletics had an amazing fall season. Every team qualified for CIF playoffs and six of the seven fall sports won Orange Coast League championships. Our winter sports are up and running and looking towards successful Orange Coast League seasons. Every winter, early winter results have our boys basketball team posting an undefeated record and a top 10 Orange County ranking. Our inaugural wrestling season will have its first competition this weekend at Villa Park High School and lacrosse is starting soon. Boys and girls soccer has also had several games so far. LBHS ASB athletic commissioners chose senior Haley Jarvis as athlete of the week due to her outstanding work for varsity soccer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Very much. Cindy.
Hello. So, um, kind of moment walking back to the campus today. I walked off campus and just thinking about the sense of community that we have and seeing coaches out on field with our kids and Jan is just opening classrooms for kids that have forgotten things on campus and MUN team getting ready to do their thing. And it just, um, we have determined with LaBuca and also CSBA that we are gonna be doing that IVB training and I think school board will be involved too. And I'm just grateful for that opportunity to further strengthen that power of us, because I think it's really strong here. I think with our political climate and, um, there's neighboring districts that are in such an unhappy place that I get tons of feedback from all the time. And so it just makes me grateful again that we have the leadership and support and the strength of community here that I think really benefits LaBuca and our classified and our administrators and mostly our students. And I think the students really feel that being recognized for the things that they do. Kind of culminated, I got to do leadership training with TOW, El Moro, and some of our ASB kids. And there were classified and teachers there and Holly was there and kids from all different levels. And the kids loved it. Our students got thank you notes from the elementary kids just talking about how they miss them already so much and don't know if they can make it without them. So it was a great show of that power of us for them all working together. We appreciated ASB's participation though.
Thank you. CSBA.
Um, I would have to concur with you that I think it's gonna be a great year having a partnership with the administration and LaBuca and CSBA. Starting off with the IVB training negotiations. It's gonna be a great partnership. And CSBA actually last week had a bargaining training for CSBA for its orange field office, which was a little bit different from our normal training. So I'll look forward to the IVB training. And we have our final ballot voting for our classified employee of the year. I think that closes tomorrow. And tomorrow we have our December. And happy holidays to every other one of you, obviously, since we're in the term for everyone. And just aim forward to a great holiday break and a great new year, so.
Elizabeth, are those the category reputations again?
Yes. Um, for each department.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any reps from the organizations? School Power, PTA?
Where members of you have sent something to an appointment?
Yeah, start.
Um, so I did attend the calendar committee meeting, which was several productive hours gathering data. So that's it, summary. Uh, we also attended the California School Board Association Conference in San Diego. And I'm really appreciative that the district supports us to go. And I just wanted to share three takeaways I got from that conference. There was a Google presenter and he's called an education evangelist. I just love the title. Uh, and he noted that the future needs digital leaders, which entails digital literacy, but more importantly, problem solving. Technology is not the silver bullet. It is there to enable and support learning and I think we're embracing that idea in Laguna. Uh, I also went to a great session on virtual and augmented reality, uh, which was amazing. And as a teaching tool, which is an exciting opportunity for unique experiences in classroom. And my last takeaway was we always need to invest in continuous learning model for not only students, but teachers and staff. And that is an overall investment in our district.
That's helpful, thank you. And also grateful that, that we participated and the support of participating. I'm gonna skip mine. We didn't count. Oh, my goodness gracious. Caroline, we have a stakeholder meeting.
Yes, sorry, that was the last one, thank you. This, the last parent stakeholder meeting, we had, there was, there were less people, but that one was kind of ad hoc one. And, um, I know both of you were there and you could speak to it as well. But the, the parents seemed to be, um, very excited and kind of, for them, I think, it's like they always thought we did lots of this. Like, it's just, right, like they thought those things were there, it's interesting. And then other stuff that they haven't seen that they're just, they're very excited by. And Dr. Keller had just started releasing some of the information, showing us information, but it wasn't all final. But enough to make, they all want to come back and see what's going on. So there's something exciting.
Um, I did go to JFMC, the Joint School Management Committee, and as usual, lots of good information. Always, uh, something takeaway that just is always amazing to you, like seriously, they're gonna do that to us? Anyway, um, yeah, always, always good. I also attended School Power Endowment last Friday and Alicia made a great presentation. And I'm hoping we can move ahead with, she had a proposal for a speaker that I hope they might help us with. And then Mike was there talking about rocket ready and the, uh, the funding and how we're gonna present that. And again, they always appreciate everything that we have to, or, uh, the partnership, it's a, it's a good partnership. Then I too went to the CSBA conference and never one to just love sitting time like that, but actually had a great time, totally energized. So my three takeaways were, um, LUSD is indeed a singular district in that many of our, many of the presentations were geared to significantly different demographics, size, economic situations than ours. However, there was a gem of essential information that I was able to take away from each session. For instance, I went to one on attendance at, by Twin Rivers, which is a big district up Sacramento, has, couldn't be any more different. But they, you know, attendance is something that we struggle with. The superintendent of that district has a letter waiting for each kid the first day of school. This is what we expect. We want you to be here, here's why. Boom. I mean, just anything simple like that and it, it makes a difference. It's very impactful. Um, that one with that family engagement, which begins not with our vision for their children, but what their vision is. Volunteerism is not necessarily engagement. There are many other simple ways to engage each family on their terms with their child's outcomes in mind. Build families capacity to engage at home. And then finally, yes, I'm going there, religion in schools. Create a teachable moment from a wedge issue. Said this can work in many areas, you know, you can use this across things. But the presenter who was an attorney from Lozano and Nettley, um, just made one point in passing that you're not doing your students any favors by graduating them not knowing the difference between a Sikh and a Muslim. When you think about that.
It's history.
When you think about that, it's how you, it's how you frame it. And it's, and, and we need, we need to be, we need to be graduating well-informed global citizens. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
See, I attended the community coalition and Dr. Keller gave a fabulous presentation as he always does. He had a little trouble with the technology there, but he made it through. There was also a new person there, energetic young woman from MAB that has a lot of programs that are available if you'd like to use the. The, the, the presentation that I, that meant the most to me, I'm only gonna talk about one of them, was the one that was mismeasurement of district's vital signs about testing. And, you know, we know that local realtors, our parents, newspapers, we all size up districts by numbers. The numbers come from whether it's CD's accountability dashboard, our own accountability reports. But our representation is based on interpreting those numbers and are we really doing that fairly and meaningfully? And they had three different stories about misuse of data. And more effective, you know, that there are more effective ways to use assessments and monitor progress. And then it brought back all those old statistics classes when we, we talked about the false positives and the false negatives. And when you get a score, you know, that there's, there's a SEM, the standard error measurement. And you really have to look at that range of scores and we shouldn't be putting, we shouldn't be putting students in a group to get help if, you know, it, because they're close to that score, they may, might on another day have been higher and been fine. And the same on the other, on the other side, we shouldn't prevent a student from going ahead because of, because of a score. And then also, there should be an explanation going home with the state scores to parents. So they don't realize, so they don't think that every score is.
That's it.
It's, it's not. It's like, they, if you, if you did it over time, of course, you'd have a better picture. But one score doesn't actually have all that much meaning. We're putting, we're putting way too much emphasis on a score. And the scores that, that we're currently using, uh, they develop too quickly. It takes about five years to really develop a good test. And we, the state had to, I mean, they had to get it out really quickly. And the other thing is, it doesn't, um, it doesn't correlate from year to year. You look at the past scores, a second grader language arts score could be pretty high, third grade low, got, got senkei. And then fourth grade, high again. Well, it's not that third grade teachers are doing a poor job. This, it is not, the test doesn't, isn't, um, they didn't take the time or the money to make it like a, like a rule where you go from here to here, they're asking different things. So just a lot of information about testing that was helpful.
Thank you. Things that I attend were taking a hiatus for December. So, um, all I want to comment to Lisa, for the calendar committee that I'm also attending, is that she provided a lot of data based on the first meeting. And so the groups had a lot to work with and that means that you get with the timeline quite quickly. And it really, it really has value when you have that much to work with. So I just want to say I appreciate you making it have that substance. I don't know where we're gonna end up, but at least it was, you know, we know, we know what we're looking at. Lauren.
I'll keep mine short. One, thanks to the PTA and the PTA reflection chairs for their hard work. And for our students willing to continue to do that, it's, it's great to see high school students and middle school students still participating. You don't see that in every district. So, and you agree with Jennifer that our students fare very well in this, in those competitions? And it is part of the work that we do in our classrooms as well that helps that. It's not just about natural ability, the themes, what she talked about as well. It's great to honor the students and I was appreciative of the night that they put on at the top of the world as well. The other, just again thanking LaBuca and CSBA for their continued support and hard work and dedication to our students. It's, uh, the holiday season's a busy season and I know that it's kind of a sprint year for the next two weeks before break. But I won't have an opportunity to say I wish them all a happy break for those that are gonna have some time off. Um, I know we will have some people that will still be, be working, but much deserved break and looking forward to a new year when we turn the corner, so.
So I just returned today from the SEVA JPA meeting, which is our dental and dentistry insurance is through SEVA. And they offer a one-day training and then we have our board of directors meeting. And the focus is really on total health, which we're seeing, you know, we're doing with students. It's a focus on mindfulness as well as is the physical and emotional wellbeing of, of all of our employees. And it really helps to keep costs down, which is an added benefit. So we'll be convening our first wellness committee meeting next week. That we're, is a subcommittee of the insurance committee that will be working on developing some strategies to help bring those things to our place. Also, we have, we're finalizing our teacher of the year and CS, uh, classified school employee of the year in a variety of categories, which we always do. And we will be formally announcing those at the Holiday Open House next, uh, on the 20th, tomorrow. So stay tuned, we'll be surprising those folks in the next week, so.
And that's, that's LaBuca also.
Yes, so teacher of the year and our classified school employee of the year.
Hopefully, but come.
I just feel like I'll talk through a heap, but go first, I can introduce the auditors.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, good evening, um, happy holidays. So our teachers have been busy attending trainings and our principals have been, uh, wonderful supporting them. So, um, history, social studies have been busy with the history project and our math project is back, modeling lessons in classrooms. We've had some NGSS planning days. A group of five teachers, Esther, Danny, and I were up in San Francisco for about two and a half days of this symposium and that was wonderful fun. I, I do want to, um, uh, give a shout out to Irene for her, her IA trade show that she, um, helped facilitate, uh, a bit ago. Um, it was, it was well received and we are appreciative of her willingness to continue to work collaboratively. Do you like us on Thursday? It's a busy season, but it's a great one, or a great one for your sport. Thank you.
Royce, can I get you to come up? Yes, please, yes, sir. Up to the podium, please.
What's our meeting to present? Always from there?
Always. Okay, so as Royce walks up, I just wanna thank he and his staff. It's a week long of gathering lots of data. And with, not just thanking his staff, but our staff as well, because every department's involved in the audit. And it's going to go a lot of different elements of our district to make sure that we're continuing, continuing to do things not just right, but constantly improving. So Royce, thank you very much for coming to the auditorium.
I should be here this evening, thank you so much and, uh, enjoyed the previous presentation. So I'm here to present to you your audited financial statements. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Your audited financial statements, so what does that really mean for some of you who may not have, uh, had this presentation before? The audit is intended to provide reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. And I always like to point out reasonable versus total. The total means that we're here and we're looking at every single transaction and that's not what we do. Ours is a, it's a higher level view. Of course, if we, if we wanted, we could be here all day long, all the time. Uh, of course, if we, if we wanted, we could be here all day, all, all the time, looking at every single transaction. I don't think that's really what you want. It's really what your internal control structure is intended to do is to identify and detect errors and misstatements and what have you. So again, ours is a higher level sort of, um, viewpoint. The highest level of assurance that the audit can provide is what we call an unmodified opinion. So we're, the only thing in here, actually in the audit report, that's, that's the auditor's, is our opinion. Everything else is your information. So with that said, if there's ever a modification of the opinion, then that's really something that you want to listen for. We're saying, but we're qualified or this is a modified opinion because of this or this or this. Really, you want to ask the question, why is that occurring? So with that said, there's a lot of information in here and truth is, it's, it's, um, I think the only people who really like this report are the auditors, to be honest with you. So, I usually do, what I like to do is point you out into some specific pages that summarizes the outcome of the audit. So with that said, if you have the audit report in front of you, if you could turn to page eighty-four. And this is handy, this is called the summary of auditor's results. And for your district, there's three specific areas that we're looking at. One would be the financial statements and the underlying internal controls that support your numbers. The second would be federal awards and the last would be state awards. The federal awards and state awards are primarily compliance. And what that means is that you receive funding from federal sources and state sources and you're required to comply with specific requirements in order to keep those monies. So with that said, the, you'll see to the right, under, uh, to the side of financial statements, we have an unmodified opinion. And if we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, they will be noted here, they would follow immediately after this page. For the federal awards, unmodified opinion, we have to look at certain federal programs. And this year we looked at what we call the special education cluster. It had the most expenditures in there and so that's the one that we chose. And, and other reasons that we would consider to be a higher risk program. And then lastly, there's a whole lot of state awards on here. Um, and you have an unmodified opinion related to that. So from, from my perspective, this is the outcome that you really kind of want to see. Now, with that said, there's always opportunities for improvement in our minds as far as what we call controlled deficiencies. And those actually begin on page eighty-nine. And, uh, this year they're primarily dominated by associated student body activity, which is not different than other years as well, to be honest with you. The other page that I think is really important for, um, board members to kind of focus on in here is what we call the schedule of financial trends and analysis, and that's on page seventy. Financial trends are incredibly important. It kind of helps you identify where you've been and where you're going. And so, most of the information in this audit report is intended to be for the fiscal year that just was completed. This is the only page in the audit report that actually has three years' worth of information, including the year that we audited. And then what we call your out year or the budget year, which is the year you're currently in. So again, this is really where you want to look to see how you're trending. Being basically a district, uh, you'll go last line, average daily attendance isn't as critical for you. But the things that you do want to look at is, are you deficit spending? Um, two of the three years that we're looking at, you, you did deficit spend? You're retaining, uh, a solid reserve? This is, there's, there's nothing here, uh, other than, than some deficit spending, which is quite frankly, always occurs. When you have, uh, when you have a lot of needs, program needs and what have you. So, but that's the sort of trend that I would look at and just, just be cautious of that. Uh, your debt actually is declining. So this is really, again, if I'm new to the district and I want to look to see your, where you're at and where I believe you're heading, this would be the page that I'm looking for. So with that said, that summarizes the outcome of the audit. And as long as I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the audit itself.
This is not as an actual, I was waiting for contact. This is the time to ask more questions. Ask any reading.
Well, I noticed that you found something about not reporting vacation days.
Yes, sir.
That, that.
Was that page like eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine, yeah, yeah.
Was this the first one or the second one?
First one, it's the first one.
Related to vacation accruals, yes. Part of our payroll testing, we looked at a lot of different things. We looked at new employees coming on, the employees that have left the district, and also vacation accruals. That's really critically important. And our testing noted that for a couple of the employees that we selected, the vacation kind of actually hadn't been input into the, uh, the system itself. So whenever we find these sort of issues, we bring it forward and then the district, uh, generally their, the business office looks at that and, and forward lanes a response. Um, I would guess that, that Mr. Dix is already moved in that direction.
I guess my question is, if you, if you find something, then do you look further? Do you look to see if there's more, more employees or is that up to us?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. Uh, we will. Uh, in this case, we didn't find any other than our initial sample. And, you know, with sampling, it, it's usually, it's generally driven statistically. Meaning that statistically, if you have a large enough sample, you already kind of know what your, your rate of error is going to be. So if it falls within that, you, if you select another hundred, you're probably not going to find any more than that. But even with that, we will expand the sample when we have issues. Now, if we'd have tested, let's just say twenty employees and all twenty of them were an issue, then we probably wouldn't expand our test. We'd probably say, we think you have a problem. Hopefully that makes some sense.
Yeah, does, thanks.
Sometimes when we've had, as you said, ASB is difficult, there's a, there's already been a response, so we expect that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you.
Yeah, yeah.
More response.
Okay. Sometimes that by the time you come make a presentation, you've already had that.
Right, right.
This is last, this clear, so it's going to change for this year. Should be requesting the next year's audit.
Thank you.
We'll follow up also, but we'll also test other sites as well because you want to keep sampling, um, to make sure that it's not a systematic issue. It's just maybe isolated to one particular site and then you address it, uh, by changing your process is a thing you'd be.
Well, I always try to do you justice and read what you give us and I always am learning something. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's a really complicated business. So I, I, I appreciate what you do for us because it's.
Well, thank you so much.
I couldn't do it. I just keep trying to learn. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Again, it's a pleasure to, to work with you, just.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the rest of your evening.
They are paying for your.
Now, in response to some of the issues with ASB and cash controls, that's been modified since this report, as I just mentioned, it just occurred last year. And then of course with the tenant distraction, that's a constant issue we'll throw into all of our employees because we, we have to encourage and remind the entire time and program system so that it gets put into our time and time is popular. So these two things have been on our radar, but they're, and they're always on our radar because they're important things that are easy to make errors.
Well, I, I think most districts, uh, student body funds are, are looked at. I mean, I think that's.
They are always on our radar.
Yeah.
I didn't, I think I didn't ask them a little well, but I, I didn't know whether it had to go back to the auditor.
In this instance, we could have put and written a response, but the changes were made for last year, it was made for this year.
Okay, got it. I'm now understanding what you're trying to.
It was, right.
Thank you. All right, now we have, are going to have our annual organization meeting and so it becomes, here's.
I might actually take that one. All right, um, education code section thirty-five, one forty-three requires the governing board of each school district to hold an annual organizational meeting and election within a prescribed fifteen day period. For the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, fifteen day, or two thousand seventeen, sorry. The fifteen day period is from December first through December fifteenth. The village unified school district board bylaw number one hundred, also specifies that the board shall hold an annual organizational meeting and elect a slate of officers. I will conduct nominations and elections per term. Call for nominations for the position of president of the board of education.
I'd like to nominate Jan Vickers.
I'll second it.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
While election, I get to turn it back over to the, uh, new board president, who will continue to go with the elections appointments and conduct the balance of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I've asked for nominations, but we're clear. He's in. I'm almost in favor.
Aye.
opposed. And I asked for appointment of the secretary of board education. And that's, that's for it. And to be up to it is a vote. So, we're going to stick with that.
I'm good.
Uh, next is appointment, or gaps to the following groups. We didn't do any surveys or anything to see if there's any desire changes, so.
I think, I think it might be great to make some changes, to kind of switch things around. And I, I'd like to nominate Peggy for district representative for Orange County nominating committee and Orange County School Board Association.
Where'd this come from? Okay. I'm not sure what it entails, but I'm.
You're good.
Okay.
You're not afraid of strangers.
No.
I am not.
Yes, no, I know that.
This is good for you. You've done it for several years.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, she can ask me.
You can prep me.
Who is your alternate?
Um, maybe it was Kennedy.
I don't know who, I'll, I'll, I'll be alternate if you want.
Okay.
I'm happy.
So that's just appointed, you don't need to motion on that?
Right.
Is there all appointed?
It is appointed. I'm appointing you.
Okay. Since you're president, I would take that away.
I think being appointed.
Hmm, that's why she didn't call me earlier this week.
And, um, if it's, if it's an agreement, I'll stay as representative to the council. And I don't, I haven't printed the alternate yet.
I'll stay at school power, just because I've only been doing it for about a few months.
I haven't really been doing that on the staff. Yeah, you want to stay on the staff.
I, I would like to change.
Because they.
I would like to.
Do we need to turn it off?
Yeah, because we all need.
Okay, okay.
If you're thinking of everybody in job.
I don't know nothing about the T E. But Rachel.
What?
I go to the meeting, that's why we're here.
She's there.
Yeah, she's there. I'm on board, yeah.
Oh, are you on board? Oh, then we should have.
Well, somebody wants to do, I mean, I don't care if I don't have shit. No, 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 I'm not the alternate, I'm actually on the PTA board.
Okay, tech this time and then tech now or?
I'm their parliamentarian. I may change the rules.
What is the file alternate?
It's mine, I, 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 I have PTA PTSD, so it's all good.
I'd like to try the. And I'd like to try the endowment. Just to learn more about.
Want endowment? Okay, that, 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 their meeting, eight o'clock on Friday mornings once a month, so that, that works. Okay, I'll just tell them. I'll just say the alternates.
Okay.
So as secretary, I'm just unclear. So we have, uh, Peggy Wolf as the OC, um, OC SBA rep. The cat is alternate. We're going to be council PTAs. I have Jan as first. Carol as the alternate.
Correct.
The foundation, um, school park foundation. Uh, I have Peggy still, who should just start up. And alternate.
I'll do alternate.
Endowment is going to be. Alternate.
It's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm a great alternate. Kind of like I, so I got asked to come, I was the alternate. Oh my gosh.
And it's the last.
Then last of the show, I suppose.
I've got two, so I'm covered.
I, I think Carol would be great for the college.
Oh, I can do.
It's, it's a morning. It's, yeah, it's interesting.
Every day. Okay, and then alternate? Maybe alternate. I love it.
You're the bridesmaid.
Just, I'm just always right.
I like it.
This is the alternate, we all con kenne. Good. I'm just getting out of all this.
She waited.
Not complaining.
It will, then guess.
The one is kind of just the one. She does the CTE thing.
She does, that's how it is.
And just, she, she just as a reminder, um, the, uh, for president and myself were actually members of all of these as execution members. Okay, so there are many times where Jan may attend or we may attend. So if there's a reason that you might not be able to be at a meeting, I fear that the, and the alternate can't be there, just letting Jan know. One of us try to attend as well.
Our next audience has set our meeting dates, time and place for twenty eighteen. These are the recommended regular meeting dates. These meetings will be held at a time determined by the board and it's typically the second and fourth Tuesday at six P M. So these reflect Tuesdays.
Correct.
And.
And the teacher of the year banquet is not on Tuesday, October twenty-third, so we'll say.
I will set this time. And they, we typically meet here in the boardroom. Is it me or the city or are we down there, they up here?
We're, they're here.
Up there. All right, so are there any known conflicts? So hopefully we can keep this scalable. We try to. And we tap the votes. All right, so. Carol, all day, rows, dates and times. Aye. That's okay. And then we have several annual reminders. The first is the Aliso property option reminder, which is, we have it, right?
Yes, we do. Change in the business, I didn't bring the dollar over. Big change from paper to actual coin.
Yes.
Yes. And I provided some information in the page as well as a brief clarification to the city on the matter.
Right. Which is always, which is really good.
Yes.
And that, and you're going to be in charge of it in twenty forty-one.
That's why I switched into the coin.
It's not an entertainment, right? All right, and then we have, uh, resolution, uh, number oh one dash oh two, which zero one dash zero two. Facilities are carrying present programs, just to remind our community to all of those who supported our plans that we are conditionally keeping our facilities available here. And we can use a lot of that. Okay, then we move on to the contact calendar. Are there any items that we're going to speak to the board? And we have a couple of changes on the maintenance discussion meeting and on the hotel with the fans. So then I have a motion, please, for, uh, I have a consent A through N. Are there any minor questions or comments on the details? And I need a public comment on these items. They'll all speak up at once.
I was just going to say, some of the conferences looked really interesting.
Although there's a lot too.
Yeah, I, I especially liked, uh, two, I especially liked the Kate one with literacy and justice for all. What I, what I really appreciated was they were putting spoken word as part of that. Yes, and, uh, I hope that we, I hope that information is disseminated, you know, to those who don't see it.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we have information items tonight, um, updated on our computer science pathway committee.
So, yes, so Mike will be presenting on the committee. I'd like to thank Mike for his leadership in this area. He's been a lot of fun to partner with on this committee and he's giving us all organic.
Doctor, uh, Professor Vickers, members of board, we, um, glad to give you an update on what we've done so far. We got, I got a chance to work with some amazing staff, principals, assistant principals, uh, teachers and classified staff on the committee. So we have everybody represented and all schools represented. And, uh, we started by just gaining a better understanding of what computer science is and what digital citizenship is and what digital literacy is. We kind of went over those terms and gained a better understanding. Then we identified a skills continuum of what we are doing now. So like, what are we currently doing in the district? So like, what are we currently doing in the district from K twelve? And we saw a lot of activities going on, which was good. Uh, but we realized that we needed to take one step further and kind of look at aligning them with, you know, like having an alignment of curriculum. So one, one thing that came out of the committee right away was the high school was using code.org in their class. And the middle school looked at, they, they had just released the middle school curriculum from code.org. And state security said, oh, that looks like it will match up what we need in middle school. So they're piloting that, so that would be a good alignment from middle to high. So that's one thing that came out of the committee. The other thing that came out is we looked at the computer, we looked at the standards for computer science. Uh, there isn't state standards yet, but they're coming out soon. So we looked at the computer science teachers of America standards, there's about three hundred. And we tried to align them with existing activities. And we realized right away in that process that this project was gonna be more than just a small committee that meets a, you know, a few times a year. This was gonna be something that needed more work and needed more alignment, you know, more work as far as working with the teachers to align it. And training with teachers and perhaps even helping with, you know, teaching the students in, in this, in this project. So that's kind of how we ended, is realizing that there is more work to be done on this, but that we need additional manpower to complete the project. And that's kind of a summary of it.
Any questions? When you say three hundred standards, you said like K twelve?
K twelve, yeah. And I don't want very much.
Well, I mean, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
I saw an article today that talked about librarians being a public act. And are librarians included in your discussion?
So the, the committee recommended that we, we include that as part of this project. And we're exploring that with, you know, different ways to, to make that happen. But yes, they definitely are, especially for digital literacy, because that includes research and all of those parts.
Thank you. When do they expect, when does the state expect to have their standards?
We think summer, but we're not, there's no, there's no guarantee.
Oh, okay, it's going soon. It's gonna be sooner than everything else we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
And that, uh, the K twelve states started working on that, um, the computer science continuum, state board education, there was some expectation from them. Uh, they're seeing other countries and other states starting to really, um, take this on as an understanding of what is the expectation for our students when they graduate as fall graders? That they should be exposed to, know how to do, um, and have opportunities and exposure to. So, uh, we'll be working through that. One of the areas that, uh, as Mike mentioned, you know, and in this evaluation, it's a fairly robust area of three hundred standards and a variety of opportunities for us to get into the classrooms. We will need to work with our teachers to model that. And, uh, we'll be bringing forward potentially at one point in January, kind of a recommendation from staff on how we might accomplish that. So stay tuned on that, but that's what I'm, um, to work for review. And working with, um, our, uh, school foundation as well to determine this scenario that we can do some fundraising towards, um, increase our opportunities. So again, areas that we're looking to, to enhance and support. It can't be one more thing, it needs to be something that we, um, we walk along and, and identify where those opportunities lie, that our teachers can partner. Uh, we found success with our current model in art with, um, with Bridget, who's just a fantastic, uh, person all the way around. But she goes in and helps support what we currently are doing with our students and finds ways to tweak it to make it more in line with our instruction, um, and in line with standards. So we believe that's a creative model, bless you, that will, uh, look to potentially replicate, uh, for next school year to support our teachers. Because a lot of teachers are doing a lot of technology in classrooms, they have instruction aids are doing technology in your classrooms K five. But we, we understand that trying to say now you need to do more with the standards, that's, that's a huge undertaking.
I also look at it as, so yes, we have the technology and Peggy McCallum was, goes seven on that, which is important, but, but hand in hand with that is the, the literacy part. And how do you sift what is and what isn't? And you have to learn that, I think that's something that we've got to start teaching at a very young age at this point. Because it's so.
Especially the exposure that did have outside of school day.
Exactly. So how is, how are you, how do you be?
Be believable then, do they just say that's what it is?
Right.
Oh, then it is.
Yeah, how, how do we, how do we help them to discern what is?
And even help parents.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm gonna say with the.
And that was his comment on digital, not only literacy, but leaders, the people who understand the complexity of it.
I just think it's, I just, it's so, it's moving so quickly and it's so, and it's just everywhere.
It is. Well, you see, when your kids want to innovate things that are from Florida, it's just, the teachers who latched onto it were just like, they loved that. And then the next year, there's something that's beyond that.
Yeah, and that's why it's so important that it's a skill continuum, um, not necessarily, uh, you know, you learn how to use Scratch.
Right.
It is, it really is a skill.
Not at one time, yeah.
Right, and, and the, and the thought process. So what you'll hear a lot of is analytical thinking, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity. Those are all areas that we have to work through. Sometimes people use analytical thinking, critical thinking interchangeably, and they're not, they are different things. So this is our opportunity to, to use the right tool for the right purpose. And technology is not the end all be all by any stretch, uh, for every single, uh, issue that arises. However, we need to use it as the right tool at the right time, uh, to teach those skills to our students, knowing that, uh, the computer has a, it's, it's not going anywhere.
Right.
But how do you help students navigate that and, and manage all the information that comes up? You know, it's like drinking from a fire, but it's unfortunate at times, so. But still appreciate the comments as well. So we'll, we'll continue the conversation as well. And in the meantime, if the board has any questions, comments?
It seems to me, it's, for me, it seems like tied into lifelong learning concepts that you, that we need to help our students understand. It isn't gonna be this way, you know, when you're at college or when, I mean, it's, it's a continual change and it's fast, it's moving so fast. And that, we can help them learn how to be open to that. And then how to sit through and utilize what actually will work for them. That's, and it would, and we have to do that for our, our staff then too, at the same time. It's, it's a challenge. It's not, I think it's, I think education's a lot harder now.
Oh, yeah. The iPhone today to a kindergarten will be obsolete by the time their.
Of course, yeah.
So without.
It's a little, it's a chip.
Like ten years old. It's only ten years old. It's amazing.
I'm already talking to her a lot. Amazing. I think that was the iPhone's ten years old, right?
Right, ten years old, yeah.
So.
That's it.
Ten or three.
All right. Thank you. We have, um, a number of action items this evening. Our first is approval to accept the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen district audit.
Thank you, President Vickers. As the, um, Royce Townsend from the auditing was presented tonight, uh, we believe the staff all the things are accurate. We know the comments that will monitor for areas of improvement, uh, are mentioned in there. We've already taken steps to address those and, um, are continuing those areas of focus for us so that next year's audit is claimed over a piece that is unmodified. And, um, that it shows strong fiscal strength for our district that we're hoping to continue and have been presented on a level of victory.
I agree. So we need a motion to. Any public comment? I'm in both. Carrie is by both. Next is approval of positive certification of first interim report. And Mr. Dixon, step follow him to like.
Hey, buckle up.
We have what, fifty, sixty slides in?
No, I don't ever go below, above forty. Thank you, President Vickers. And this may look familiar for those who attended our J F M C committee. The first interim report, I'm happy to say we're recommending a positive certification based off, um, the analysis of our budget in current year and the two up years. So positive certification essentially means that we're showing we can meet our current obligation this year and two years out. There have been a num, a number of changes from our adopted budget to first interim, of which I'm gonna highlight tonight. They are all included in the detailed report, however, I summarized them in this presentation for us. So the first major change, and we mentioned, we talked about this at the budget adoption, is that the total compensation increase of one point five percent. And the off-schedule payment of one percent was not yet reflected in the salaries and benefits, which it now is. We reduced our average daily attendance to reflect what our actual moment has come in at this year. We added in the one-time funding, which was not assumed at all in the one, in the, uh, adopted budget. So though our ADA come in a little bit lower, adjusted lower, we didn't assume any, any bit of one-time money, which is based on the average daily attendance, so that's a very positive change for us. We're gonna see some resolutions later tonight that we're proposing, um, to increase our, uh, basic aid differential reserve fund seventeen by a total of two hundred and fifty thousand. Hundred and twenty-five thousand of that coming from the Aliso property reserve and a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that coming from general fund. This, at the end of the day, leaves us, when we look at our ending fund balance, five hundred and thirty, uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of potential one-time expenditures that are driven out of board goals and priorities. And this is in alignment with what we've had in the past few years between five and seven hundred thousand dollars for these potential one-time expenditures, which can deal with a lot of unforeseen's. Or if there's, um, goals or curriculum, help avoid options that aren't included in the current budget as it is. So it's flexibility of us to, if there are changes, because it is early in the year, there is a little buffer in that. So you can see, here's the changes, um, in our first interim report. You see the revenues, um, have assumed, they're assumed the same plus the one-time funding, that's the biggest change in there. Uh, the expenditures, uh, it's still roughly the same, though we added in the one and a half percent total compensation. We assumed that, we just hadn't put it into the salaries and benefits in the adopted budget. The change in fund balance is about negative one point two million dollars. However, this is very typical, again, as in prior years at first interim. In fact, last year it was almost double that in, in the negative. And that leaves us a projected un, un, uh, ending fund balance of about six point two million dollars. You can see that in our multi-year projection, the ending fund balance is projected to grow. And that again assumes the same percentages of revenue growth that we had in the past, five and a half percent this year, four and a half percent in two subsequent years. So I think it's important, now we say projected ending fund balance, what does that entail? So our, the components of our ending fund balance, we have our fifty thousand dollar non-spendable revolving cash accounts. Routine restricted maintenance reserve, that is something that was established in the same time as the FERC. And, uh, it's a reserve we can hand in our routine restricted maintenance for potential emergencies for, um, unforeseen maintenance costs beyond the early budget. The assigned one-time expenditures, that again falls back into the potential, uh, one-time, um, goals and expenditures from the board's priority or flexibility. And our reserve for economic uncertainties is based on the five percent of our total expenditures. One thing we did mention in one of the major changes that first entered from adopted budget was adding into fund seventeen. And I wanted to take the moment here on this slide to explain why. You see the basic aid differential calculation is based, if we fell out of basic aid status, what would the difference be between what we get versus what we had budgeted to expend? You can see that we'd be short, you see the one hundred differential funding there, about thirty million dollars. So we cut our budget nearly in half. So when we talk about being one hundred percent, um, fully funded in our basic aid differential, uh, we need about five point six million more dollars than we have based on today's calculation and today's reserve goals. So today, we're sitting in about eighty-two percent total funded towards basic aid differential. So that is why we're making moves, starting in this budget cycle, to increase our fund seventeen so that we close that gap. We don't, the board policy reads that if we, if we get below two-thirds of that differential calculation, we need to come back to the school board with a plan of how we're gonna repay. So that, again, that's why we're taking steps now, so that we don't get close to that two-thirds and we can maintain between that eighty, hundred percent. Um, so that we're, uh, sitting on solid ground if should prefer it, something unforeseen happen that takes us out of that status. The two-thirds threshold today, it's at about almost twenty-one million dollars. You can see we're sitting closer to twenty-six million dollars. So we're in a good spot, but if it is an area where we start to lose some of that. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions and then recommend that board approve this using positive certified.
I did a separate comment, but I actually asked Jeff on my, so we, but we say we're gonna do X, X and X over there and we commit the dollars. You know, what if something untoward happens and then the board got the dollars, but he said, hold on, because that was my thing, you know? And do it, yeah, do it like that beats that, he's like, no.
Any public comment on that first interim? Now, I've asked for motion for people to vote. So, Karen and Carol. And I, I just think that it's, I really appreciate the clarity of this breakdown on fund seventeen. Because he did point that out in the audit, that that's really the only risk here, is if something were to happen to the basic aid budget. And it's, I think it's really important to keep reminding us, you know, how much more we have from that system. And if it could ever change, and that was the whole purpose of this, so I, I appreciate the fidelity to that. But also how clear it is in the way he's.
I want to thank you for establishing it, because it's very important fund and it puts us in a very strong fiscal spot. Without that, we wouldn't be here anywhere.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose, Karen is by both. Thank you. Uh, next is approval of resolution number seventeen twenty-two, establish interfund transfers of one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the general fund to the special reserve, the non-capital outlay fund for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, President Vickers. This is of, of the approval of the transfer from the one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the general fund into fund seventeen. So in addition to this, we'll have a resolution later from the Aliso property, but this is the first of two, the business school, two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, increasing fund seventeen.
Any public comment? More questions? Motion, please. Second. Okay, this is the resolution and we are including our student rep also in the, in the local call for the resolution. So, um.
Okay, for the voting members, Mrs. Vickers?
Aye.
Mrs. Perry?
Aye.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Normandin? Mrs. Wolf?
Aye.
And our student rep, Piper Warren?
Yes.
Uh, next is approval of resolution number seventeen dash twenty-three, establish interfund transfer for one million two ninety thousand from the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plans for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, President Vickers. This is to continue our contribution that we've been making on an annual basis to support the capital improvement program, which is, uh, been our main funding mechanism for most of our capital improvement projects district-wide. And it will align with our facilities master plan, which we'll bring back now, April, February.
All in comments? More questions? Motion, please. Second. Uh, vote call, please.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes. Mrs. Normandin? Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
And our student rep, Piper Warren?
Yes.
Uh, next resolution, approval of resolution seventeen twenty-four, establish interfund transfer of one hundred thousand from the general fund to the special reserve fund, facilities repair and replacement program for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, President Vickers. So this was talked about at the annual organization meeting, uh, a little while ago. Uh, this is in response to maintaining our billings, um, in, in alignment with general obligation passed back in two thousand. And, uh, ensuring that whatever you spend money on to replace or repair is, um, maintained fidelity. So this is again another annual contribution we've been making and will continue, um, through the duration of the FERC program.
Thank you. Public comment? Any questions? Uh, motion, please. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm. I made all my notes here. Vote call, please.
All right. Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Normandin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Piper Warren?
Yes.
Uh, next resolution, uh, number seventeen twenty-five, establish interfund transfer of one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the special reserve fund for the Aliso property reserve and special reserve for non-capital outlay fund, twenty seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, President Vickers. So this is the only new resolution that we have ever done in the past. In the past, we would transfer this, whatever amount of money based on the amortized, amortization of the loan from the Aliso property to the general fund. Now we're gonna transfer it to fund seventeen to help us promote that increase. As a side note, this is the first time I've ever received a yes roll from a student rep, so thank you, Piper. I really appreciate your notes and I hope you go yes on this one as well.
A little lobby.
Uh, public, uh, questions? More questions? Motion, please. Second.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Normandin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next action item, uh, approval to award contracts for H VAC and. Our next action item, uh, approval to award contracts for HVAC and painting unit cost bid for district-wide services. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. Hi. This is a unit cost bid, there is no, uh, financial impact with awarding this bid. However, because of the amount of money we spend on capital maintenance, replacements, repairs, and painting district-wide, we do get close to the bid limit thresholds. So in case we wanted to do more work or, or having to respond to a repair of some kind, that if we exceed that, this will make it a lot easier. We did something similar with general contracting work, um, a couple of years ago. Um, and this is just another tool delivering that bid by awarding a unit cost bid that allows us to mobilize and grow work a little faster.
Public comment? More questions on this side? Motion, hold on, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, Carrie is by vote. Uh, our last action item tonight, approval of approval of positive coaching alliance. Dr. Loria.
Mr. Dixon, a break. Um, this actually is a apology to the board, this is a ratification. This was a, um, item I actually discussed with the board, uh, back in August, um, prior to us, um, having the positive coaching alliance come on to campus and give our training to our coaches. Went to pay the bill and realized that we hadn't brought it for the pool. Um, but again, uh, one of, one of the things we, we talked about it, but it's a big sport, so I apologize for that. But again, this is a positive coaching alliance that, um, we partnered with, they've done, uh, sessions for our coaches. They also worked, uh, that day, uh, we hosted a large portion of, of posts throughout French County, uh, including athletes, coaches from other districts as well to participate. And, uh, well, well-received, uh, training and, uh, as Lance and you can point out, just a great opportunity for our coaches. So, uh, I can apologize for ratification, um, but question could be approved, so we can pay our bill.
Public comment? Any questions from the board? I have a question. When we did this, a lot of folks came here to, to the charge and provided.
Yeah, we were doing it anyway, so we provided it.
Okay. And, uh, the other question I had, uh, says traditional life workshops, have you had those?
Yes, we're, I believe we've had one.
Just a bar.
So there's an online portion that you can, and then there's a live portion as well, so.
I noticed it got swag bagged.
Yeah, there's lots of swag bags in there, so.
Motion, please. Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Um, now we have, we didn't put it in here, but we usually have the kind of work on it.
So that was my error, I added an item and lost that one.
Oh, okay. So we've looked at.
Looked at.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to say that the dance show was, they are really doing a good job and pass that on to SD because, um, as I, I shared this with Dr. Gloria, that is, um, we went to that at night and my husband said to me, they're really good. Which is really, um, yeah, a big kudo.
You did a great job.
And, um, that's all. So I asked for a motion. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 9th, uh, since the board room, a motion to adjourn, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, thank you. Holiday, I like the, the, the holiday. Great long time, aye.